So basically, a summary of what she said is that, you know, the students are a bit older, they're not preschool students. Parents have about a month to, you know, help students understand of what these expectations are going to be. We have to work as a team, especially the parents, you know, letting the students know, you know, what's expected and that, you know, they need to respect the school, the protocols, the teachers. And she mentioned that she does work with younger students, I believe she said preschool. And, you know, they're following the protocols, they're wearing their masks. So basically, we just have to work as a team and, you know, let students know what's expected and, you know, that respect to our protocols.
Okay. I know there is one parent is raising her hand. I would like to kind of finish our questions because we already prepared and then answered a lot of questions that we received. Let us finish those questions and I think those questions will definitely, you know, answer your, your questions as well. But I would like to hold on to get the questions from the parents. Priscilla, let's finish the questions that we prepared and then we will go to the questions.
So vamos a terminar las preguntas que teníamos y después seguiremos con las preguntas que tienen actualmente. So one of the questions was, will breaks be standard? Or how will breaks work?
So we will have five minutes break between classes and students are going to switch the classes.
So una de las preguntas era cómo van a ser los tiempos de descanso o de cambios. So sí vamos a tener cinco minutos de descanso durante cada sesión o periodo de clases y los estudiantes sí se van a mover de clases.
And the last question that I have is, how will dismissal be handled?
So we will handle dismissal. We will, we will give certain time for certain grades, at least they don't go all at the same time, they don't dismiss at the same time. Again, based on the number of the students, we will come up with a schedule and then we will go over that schedule with those students who are coming to hybrid model.
La última pregunta que yo tuve fue sobre la salida de clases y si vamos a tener, va a ser igual una salida de clases escalonada por grados para que los estudiantes no salgan todos a la misma vez. Igual todo esto va a depender basado en el número de estudiantes que decidan regresar a la escuela físicamente. Haremos un plan, horarios y los dejaremos saber.
Okay, and then there was another question about PE. We are not gonna have PE in person or PE will be virtual.
So la pregunta sobre la educación física, no vamos a tener la clase de educación física en las escuelas físicamente, va a ser virtual.
They're not gonna be changing, they're just gonna do, you know, virtual PE.
Si no van a hacer ese cambio de ropa que tienen que hacer para hacer educación física, todo va a ser virtual para la clase de educación física.
And students will bring their own Chromebook. If they are using their laptop at home, we will provide them a Chromebook to bring to school.
So los estudiantes sí van a traer su propio Chromebook, su computadora. Si ellos no tienen una o están usando una diferente en casa y necesitan una, nosotros les vamos a proporcionar una para que ellos la puedan traer a la escuela y llevar de regreso a casa.
And can Jessica and Jenna and then admin team look at the chat box? Just go through the questions to see if we haven't answered. I would like you guys to kind of go over while I'm getting the questions from the parents who raised her head. Alright, thank you.
Okay, so do we want to go with the parents?
Yes. Yes.
So I see one hand raised and I believe it's Ethan's mom, I'm so sorry, I cannot remember your name.
Lupe?
Lupe, there we go.
Okay, so.
It was there.
Buenos dias. Yes, my question is, my concern is the decline in grades. I'm gonna be honest with Evan, I'm having a hard time with him keeping his grades up because he's just not motivated anymore. I am, this being at home thing has affected both of them. And I try as a parent to do my best. But they really need to be like at school with live instruction and I got to a point that I just don't know what to do as a parent, like. It just really affected his grades, you know? And I hope, I'm hoping that you guys have that into consideration too, like that they've been home too long, you know? And how is the school handling that, like, you know, their academics for this year? With a huge decline in grades. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Dr. Pollak, you wanna chime in?
Sure, a great question and I know how hardworking your, your students are. It's unfortunate to see the drops in their grades, but as a school, as teachers, we have been as flexible as possible because this is a worldwide pandemic, maybe once in a century that happens. We want to really minimize the learning loss. We have increased our tutoring sessions, we are discussing the summer, summer school where we can, you know, teach them. But obviously, when they return back to school, this is gonna help. And as a teacher, as, as an admin who visits the classrooms, it's really hard. From the teacher's perspective, it's really hard. They mostly like, like feel like they're talking to a wall because no one is responding to them, it's really hard for them as well.
Right, right.
Everyone is doing their best. This is an effort of collaboration, if we can cooperate and cooperate together with the parents, we will overcome this as it's not only our problem, it's the entire world's problem.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So muy buena pregunta fue sobre los estudiantes que han estado bajando grados drásticamente. Como mencionó el doctor Pollak, estamos haciendo muy flexibles con los estudiantes. Esto es algo que está sucediendo en todo el mundo, no solamente en nuestra área. Estamos tratando de minimizar esa pérdida de aprendizaje con tutorías, con el planeamiento de las clases en el verano. Cuando ellos regresen a clases físicamente va a ayudar muchísimo. Ahorita es muy difícil también para los maestros como, me imagino que ustedes han mirado las clases, veces los estudiantes no responden, tienen su cámara apagada. Pero esta es una colaboración entre la escuela, los padres y los estudiantes. Y como dice señor Pollak, you know, es algo difícil, algo que está pasando, que no pasa muy común, pero trabajando juntos y colaborando nos vamos a superar de esta situación.
And I, I just, if I could just add something, this is a, it's also affecting their socio-emotional, you know, learning as well, or just overall socio-emotional. And my team of teachers that, we have a team that met this morning, we discussed that as well. And we even want, you know, to include a student part of that team to get their input. But that's another area that is concerned, you know, of course the grades, but also the socio-emotional, making sure that they're healthy in that respect as well.
So agrega el señor Marcelo de que nosotros también estamos mirando que en todos lados los estudiantes están teniendo un efecto negativo en, en el área socioemocional. Queremos que sepan que nosotros sí tenemos un equipo de administradores y maestros que están mirando esta área y están mirando cómo podemos ayudar a los estudiantes en lo socioemocional. Queremos incluir estudiantes en este equipo también, pero es muy importante que, you know, miremos la salud mental de los estudiantes también.
Jessica Perez raised her hand and I don't know if she's here. Jessica, you wanna go ahead? Ask her question, but anyway, maybe when she comes back probably.
I think she's having some internet problems, she's going back and forth, Mr. St.
Okay. Okay, were you guys able to look at the chats to see if we haven't addressed anything?
Yo tengo otra pregunta. Hay alumnos que desde el año pasado no han podido pasar las materias. El año pasado estaban en el décimo grado y ahorita están en el once y el próximo grado va a ser el doceavo y aún deben materias del décimo grado, ¿qué va a pasar? Porque no ha habido alguna oportunidad de que puedan subir esos grados y la mamá de la que estoy hablando está muy concerniente con esto.
Buena pregunta. So the question is, there were students who were not able to raise their grades last year, which the student was in tenth grade. This year they're in eleventh grade, they're still having trouble with the same area, with the same class. And then next year the student's gonna be in twelfth grade. So how, you know, this parent is very concerned, how they're going to, you know, mitigate the learning loss? How are they going to, you know, make up for these, this education loss or classes that they haven't been able to pass?
So, great question and Dr. Pollak, you can also chime in after I'm done. So what we are doing right now, we are, we are planning to add, we are planning to extend our instructional day for next year. And we are also planning to have a very robust, robust summer school where we can, you know, focus on the things that students kind of are missing or, you know, they have, they need help with. And, you know, as a, as a staff, we are always here and then our teachers are also close to working and then, you know, with those students and providing extra help. So what I would suggest, I would definitely suggest those students are joining the teachers tutoring starting right now instead of waiting next year to close that achievement gap. And again, as a team, we, we have to work together with the parents. And if, if you, if you have a concern and as a parent, we, let's, let's meet, let's, let's have a meeting, let's see what we can do just to bring those kids, you know, close those kids' achievement gap.
So para ayudar a los estudiantes, estamos mirando, uno, alargar el tiempo instruccional para el año escolar que viene y segundo es enfocarnos en unas clases de veranos muy enfocadas en las áreas que necesitan los estudiantes. También nos adaptamos a que atistan a las sesiones de tutoría que no se esperen para el año siguiente, que empiecen desde hoy. Y si usted tiene una pregunta, si su estudiante está pasando por algo así en área académica, hay que tener una reunión con los maestros, con el equipo administrativo, para tener un plan para ayudar a sus estudiantes.
Jessica is here, Jessica, can you ask your question or I don't know? We lost her again. Okay, there was another question about face mask. So we have enough to give out to students if they need to, if they, if they need one. You know, if we need to provide, we can provide. So we have enough, you know, enough supplies.
So una pregunta fue sobre las máscaras para los estudiantes. Si necesitan los estudiantes, nosotros tenemos suficientes para darles la máscara.
We had a question regarding the cohorts. Well, it says, if parents will get to choose what group the child is in because one option works better than the other for the family.
So we are not giving that option to the parents as admin, as a school site. We are going to decide on the cohort. But if you have a specific, you know, a very valid reason, please reach out to us and then we will take into our consideration and we will try to do our best to make sure that you get the cohort that you, that fits best to your schedule.
So la pregunta es que si los padres van a tener la opción, en qué grupo sus estudiantes van a estar? Si regresan a clases, es el grupo A o grupo B? Hasta ahorita, no, la administración va a decidir en qué grupo están sus estudiantes. Pero si usted tiene un caso donde necesite un grupo más que el otro, puede informarle a la administración y ellos mirarán su caso y ver si podemos acomodar a esa situación.
A question about if the school has many COVID cases, would there be a chance that the physical learning would stop?
Alfredo, you wanna answer that question?
Yes, no, great question. So in our health and safety policy and injury and illness prevention plan, what they call the COVID prevention program, it does talk about specific protocols that we follow when it comes to one positive case and when it comes to multiple positive cases amongst stable groups. So the important thing here is the stable groups that we're gonna develop for each grade to ensure that we mitigate the risk of transmission or exposure to COVID-19. So we have to do a really good job in planning and you will see what that looks like in terms of stable groups and how many, you know, minimizing the interaction between students and staff. All that will be presented as more details come out. But there are specific protocols in place, once there is a case, how the school then works with the local health department, how the school notifies staff, students and there are specific protocols when it comes to then do, from that, to do contact tracing, to do targeted testing and then also to do quarantine and isolation. So right now, the state law states that if, you know, more than twenty-five percent of your stable groups are, you know, is, there's a chance of infection, then we would work with the local health department to ensure that, you know, we, we follow all the protocols and we don't want to close any schools. But any decision we make about closing schools will be in consultation with the local health department. And again, we're very confident because we've been working on these seven measures, physical distancing, hand washing, you know, stable groups, putting them in the right, correct stable groups, the testing piece, the face covering, ventilation, that all these mitigation layers will help us prevent the spread and that's what we've seen across the state of California. For those schools that have opened up, there hasn't been too many outbreaks because the schools have taken those measures and we've been planning around that as well. So we obviously feel confident that that will not be the case. But if it is, we also have protocols in place to then, you know, act accordingly with the local health department to then take those steps to either close specific stable groups or to close multiple stable groups or close the school.
So con eso, buena pregunta, obviamente si hay casos en la escuela, así tenemos protocolos en nuestra póliza que el equipo de COVID, que son ahí todos los administración, los maestros y otros ciertos miembros, miembros que están siguiendo. So si hay casos, sí estamos, sí tenemos los protocolos donde tenemos que seguir con el estado. Estamos llamando a, a lo que es el Departamento de Salud Pública de Los Ángeles. Ellos nos ayudan con los exámenes de COVID testing. Pero más importante, lo importante es que si seguimos todo lo que es los protocolos de health and safety de la distancia, usando la mascarilla, verdad? Los exámenes de COVID, la ventilación, limpiando los, las aulas. Si seguimos todo eso, no esperamos tener muchos casos porque obviamente hemos preparado por mucho tiempo y ustedes van a poder venir la semana antes que abremos la escuela para ver esos protocolos, verdad? Y es muy importante para que se sienten seguros. Pero tenemos mucha confianza con la implementación de esos protocolos y también lo que se ha visto en el estado de California con otras escuelas que se han abierto. Si se siguen esos protocolos, esos siete, no va a haber muchos casos, verdad? Y si, a qué decir si hay un caso, obviamente tenemos en nuestra póliza y vamos a seguir todos esos pasos para asegurar que todos estén saludables y nada serio ocurra en la escuela.
Thank you, Alfredo. Jessica, can you? Ask your question or I don't know why you were raising your hand? Did I lose you again?
Yeah, I think she's having some internet problems. Oh, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay, good morning, everyone. Just to kind of go back very quickly to the concerns about behavior and academics. From a teacher's perspective, we do want to remind parents that we are gonna do whatever we can to make sure that we are keeping kids safe. And that means enforcing every rule that we have always had and especially the safety rules such as social distancing, keeping their mask on. Just because we're going back and I know kids are super excited about that does not mean that they have the opportunity to, you know, act that in a way that they normally wouldn't. And as for the academic concerns, we are gonna continue to hold our students to the highest academic standard that we possibly can. But with that, we also are going to be providing that support with tutoring, one-on-one help if students need it. But it's important that as a team, admin, teachers, parents, students, we are working together to make sure that everything goes as planned. So the parents can just make sure that they talk to their kids and remind them that they are going back to school if they choose to and that we expect them to behave as they should. So thank you all. Jessica Perez, do you wanna say that in Spanish?
I'll try. Buenos dias. Solo quería recordarles que como, pues como un equipo tenemos que seguir recordándoles a los niños que tienen que comportarse como deben, como debe de ser en una escuela. Aunque pues las cosas van a ser un poco diferentes, nuestra, pues prioridad es que los niños estén sanos y estén bien y eso significa que los niños se mantengan a una sana distancia, que usen su cubre boca y que pues no anden ahí corriendo por los salones o por los pasillos y que respeten todas esas reglas. Y de lo académico, pues como maestros vamos a seguir dando las clases como normal, pero también vamos a seguir dándoles tutoría cuando ocupan o ayudarlos así como individualmente. Pero tenemos todos que trabajar en esto porque va a ser algo diferente y difícil. Y si, por favor, los papás pueden hablar con sus niños y recordarles que tienen que seguir las reglas y pues hacer lo que se debe de hacer para que terminemos el año escolar pues en buenas manos, no? Gracias.
Awesome. I just, something that I saw on the questions a lot, just a reminder that parents will have the option to choose to continue with distance learning. That means, you know, your going, your student will continue at home learning.
So una de las preguntas que he mirado comentarios es de que si van a poder seguir los estudiantes aprendiendo en casa, si los papás no se sienten confortables mandándolos a la escuela. Si es una opción, ellos van a poder seguir en las clases como están actualmente por Zoom. So si está esa opción disponible y la van a mirar en la encuesta que les vamos a mandar.
Una última pregunta, podríamos volver a enviar lo que son las reglas de, el manual de reglas que hay en la escuela conforme al comportamiento y cómo debe de ser el uniforme y todo esto. Quizás convendría un recordatorio para todos nosotros y así sabemos que somos un equipo, tanto alumnos, maestros como padres, que todos estamos involucrados en las reglas para iniciar nuevamente el regreso a clases.
Yeah, so her question or comment is if we can resend the school's policies and rules just as a reminder to what the students need to follow. It would be a good reminder and a good way for parents and students, you know, to know what they have to do once on campus. That will be, that will be part of our presentation, Priscilla, that we make for returning to campus.
So sí será parte de todas estas reglas y pólizas que tenemos también van a ser parte de la presentación que vamos a tener antes de que ingresen los estudiantes a las clases.
There was a question about, you know, came from one of our parents who has a student and who has an asthma. I just send you a direct message if you give us your, I mean, we can find your contact information, but we need to meet, we need to, we need to meet and go from there. If you can send me your contact information email or your kid's name and then we will take it from there.
Mustafa, can I mention something quickly after you translate, Priscilla?
Please.
Sí. So una pregunta sobre un estudiante con asma. Por favor, mande su nombre de su estudiante y de usted a nuestro director. Así nosotros podemos tener un plan para su estudiante y hablar sobre sus opciones o como, pues para darle su respuesta a las preguntas que tiene sobre la situación de su estudiante. Ms. Priscilla, tengo una pregunta.
Carol, can you, can you wait one second? Alfredo, go ahead.
Tomamos su pregunta después del comentario.
Yes, so, so I saw quite a bit of questions about vaccinations. So Magnolia Public Schools does highly encourage vaccinations for all employees, obviously for our community members and this is a state mandate from the California Department of Public Health. So one of the things that was written on the chat box was how beginning March fifteenth, you know, those people aged sixteen to sixty-four, including some of our students with underlying health conditions, will be eligible for the vaccine. So one of the things we're working with across all Magnolia schools with our COVID nineteen teams and our certified nursing assistant, all of those wonderful people you see when you come to the school and they do temperature checks and wellness checks and also our registered nurse is to help our families know how to navigate the appointment of vaccination. So if you do want to take vaccination and you do have family members that fall in that category, we at the school will help you to figure that out because it's super important besides giving access to our teachers and our staff or also for us to really help our families in our community, right? And we heard Governor Newsom yesterday talk about the importance of making sure that many communities, some of the communities we serve in our schools have access to the vaccine because right now that access hasn't been equitable across all the counties. So we're gonna work very hard to make sure that we educate our families. So that's to helping you and we will come out with more information on how we do that. But I just wanted to address that because we are obviously a community and as a community, we have to take care of each other. So we're gonna take that extra step to then take care of our community.
So con eso, nomás quería hablar sobre las vacunas porque obviamente hubo comentario en el chat. So es muy importante para nosotros, la recomendación es que si uno quiere agarrar la vacuna, sí se recomienda, verdad? Pero no es mandatorio. Para nuestro personal en la escuela es algo que es una prioridad y esta semana mucho tiempo se ha pasado para asegurar que todos agarren la vacuna los que quieren. Y sabemos que también muchos grupos de nuestra comunidad van a ser elegibles el quince de marzo. O para nosotros es muy importante ayudar a nuestras familias, a nuestros estudiantes. El grupo que sigue va a ser de los años dieciséis hasta el cuatro con obviamente condiciones que tienen como diabetes, high blood pressure. Todo eso, nosotros vamos a ayudar a nuestras familias, a nuestra comunidad y esa información van a recibirla. Tenemos nuestra asistente que siempre está tomando obviamente esos datos cuando llegan y también con nuestra enfermera también vamos a ayudar. So más detalles sobre eso.
Alright. Yes, Priscilla.
Okay, so vamos a seguir con la pregunta que tenía Carolina.
Ms. Priscilla?
Sí.
Ah, sí, mire, disculpe que los interrumpí, no, que yo tengo una pregunta. Porque mi hijo, este Ismael, tiene asma y él sí quiere regresar a la escuela. Quisiera saber ahí qué es lo que, qué medidas puedo tomar o tengo que hablar con su pediatra o qué es lo que tengo que hacer.
So her question is also regarding asthma, her student has asthma. Would it be recommended that she speak to her student's doctor or, you know, message us regarding him returning to school because the student wants to go to school physically?
No.
What we are gonna do, I took her name, we are gonna reach out to her to schedule an appointment and then we will talk to her, schedule a meeting and then go from there.
Carolina, so ya tomamos su nombre. Vamos a hacer una reunión específicamente con usted para hablar sobre la situación de su estudiante.
Sí, está muy bien, muchas gracias, Ms. Priscilla.
Gracias.
Okay, bye.
Alright.
I think.
Quisiera dar su llamada, pero no.
Annabelle, do you have a question? What, what's your question?
Okay. Más aún, a la una y media, ¿en dónde?
Okay, I think we're just listening to her conversation.
Okay, there is, there is one hand, I think, let's, uh, I would like to kind of finish the meeting after this question. Joshua?
Hola, buenos días, soy la mamá de Joshua. Eh, sí, mi pregunta es, ah, los, los niños que estén, vayan a la escuela, eh, las clases tengo entendido que empiezan a las 8, ¿verdad?, y terminan a las 12:40. Ellos no podrán tomar ningún snack, o, ah, porque tendrán un break de cinco minutos, tengo entendido, y nomás para moverse de clase, pero ellos en ese lapso no podrán comer nada? Gracias.
Um, so her question is, um, throughout the day that the students are at school from 8 to 12:40, um, will they have any time to eat a snack? Or, I know they have the five-minute break to switch classes, but will they be able to have some sort of snack throughout the day?
Um, that's a good question. Um, you know, I would like to keep that question not answered, and then I would like to wait until we see the number of the students, and then we will definitely put that on our to-do list, just to see if we can add that piece to our schedule. But as of right now, I don't want to answer, I don't want to say yes or no. I would like to wait until we see the number of the students who are coming to the campus.
So, ah, buena pregunta por ahorita, no, ah, la vamos a contestar hasta que sepamos el número de estudiantes que vamos a tener físicamente en la escuela, y al saber ese número de estudiantes le vamos a poder dar una respuesta más adecuada.
Okay, there is one question just came, um, in the chat box. So we purchased tents specifically for those students, and we are going to put those tents at our site, and then keep those students um, away from the other students, and then wait until their parents come and pick them up.
So la pregunta sobre, ah, si un estudiante tiene la temperatura alta después de que está, o después de que llegó a la escuela, ¿dónde va a ir el estudiante? So tenemos, ah, algunas tiendas, tents, donde los estudiantes van a poder estar, ah, si notamos que tienen, ah, la temperatura alta, hasta que los papás los van a recoger.
And one, we are gonna have one, we are gonna have one more question.
Yeah, yeah, hi, you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Tony.
Yeah, this is Tony, now speaking. Yeah, I have a question regarding, you know, if the student decided they can continue to do distance learning, right, from home?
Yes, that is, that is correct.
So it will be, okay. Okay, it will be as before, right?
Yes, like before, they can, they will continue online. They don't have to come to campus if they choose to not to come to campus, if they choose to continue with the distance learning.
Okay, so this is an option, okay.
Yes. Thank you for the question.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Um, there's one question, um, regarding, uh, so, la pregunta fue si van a poder seguir con, um, el aprendizaje en casa, si es, ah, si es una opción. Um, and another question is, will students, uh, mask, will they, will we allow to have students wear masks with logos?
That's a good question. Mrs. Morley, you want to answer the question?
I'm sorry, Mr. He, my audio cut out real quick. What, can you repeat?
Can students' masks have logos?
No, no, just like this, just like the clothes that we are asking students to wear. They, they should be school colors and they should be plain.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Yes, so one thing I'm working with the admin team, uh, is to, uh, see if we could partner with some, so we could create, uh, masks with the school logo and the school colors. We're very proud of our school and our communities. So we want our kids also to come, when they come to school with their mask, to have that wonderful MSA One Warriors logo. So that's something we're still working on. Uh, it's so new that, you know, it's still developing, but we do very proud of our kids and we're excited to see them. So we're thinking of a way to be able to create logos for all the schools representing our colors and our mascot. So we will have more details in future meetings.
So con eso, con las mascarillas, sí, ah, es muy importante, ah, que, obviamente, tengamos mucho orgullo de nuestra escuela y la comunidad que representamos. So estamos trabajando ahorita con los directores para poder hacer esas mascarillas con, ah, obviamente, el sello de la escuela, el mascota. So es algo que, si vamos a dar más detalles sobre de eso, para que les podamos dar esas mascarillas a nuestros estudiantes y también a nuestros maestros. Buena pregunta.
And I'm sorry, just to clarify, you know, some of the masks that we ordered do have a pattern on them. So, a pattern is different than a logo, you know? If it's an appropriate pattern, that's going to be fine. But if it's a logo that may be not appropriate, you know, I guess we'll have to take that as it comes.
So, le agrega la señora Morley de que algunas de las mascarillas que tenemos sí tienen un tipo de diseño, pero un diseño es diferente a un logotipo. Um, so, you know, eso lo vamos a ver al como, como entre el, el, el tiempo que regresen los estudiantes.
And last question from Mariana, so since she raised her hand, and I really would like to, because, you know, it's during the meeting. Um, it's been like one and a half hour, and again, we will continue to have these meetings on Fridays at 9:00 AM. You are more than welcome to join every, every Friday, just to ask your questions. Okay, Mariana.
Vamos a finalizar con la pregunta de Mariana. Um, por respeto a su tiempo, si hemos continuado con esta reunión por una hora y media, pero están bienvenidos a unirse a nuestras reuniones cada viernes para cualquier pregunta que tengan. So ahora vamos a seguir con Mariana.
So, uh, the question is for the mask, if they have like, um, a pattern on it, that is okay. But if it has a logo on it, it's, um, not okay. And then also, like, it might be able to help you guys, uh, produce the mask for the school, because I actually work at a printing company, so, uh, we can actually help with that if you guys are interested.
We will, we will reach out to you, Mariana, we will definitely reach out to you. I already have your, uh, information, we will definitely get some code from Yazwa, how about that?
We do actually do a lot of schools, we actually do, uh, uh, charmanad, and we do a lot of masks with the school logo on it. So, if you guys need help with that, my job can actually help.
Okay, we'll do, we'll reach out to you. All right, I said this is the last one, but Adolf also raised his hand, but promise, this is the very last one.
You know, you just said I came in late to, to the meeting, so I, I just want to ask you guys. Uh, my, my, with Christian, he's my son, he wants to go back, he wants to go back, and, um, he's, um, well, not happy being here. The, the one thing is, but obviously we are concerned, you know, about what's still going on. We need to know if, uh, if he stays at home, and if he still does the distant learning, will he missing out on anything as far as that academics?
Nope, not at all.
Okay, that's pretty much it, thank you.
Yeah. No, not at all, okay.
I'm just gonna try to, I saw that question a lot. Um, so muy importante, la pregunta fue que si los estudiantes están en casa comparado a ir a la escuela físicamente, si van a perder a educación, no, les van a estar enseñando lo mismo a la misma vez, o los estudiantes que están en la escuela, los que están en casa van a aprender exactamente lo mismo.
Thank you very much, everyone, for joining our town hall meeting for reopening, hybrid reopening. And again, next week, Friday at 9:00 AM, we will be here to answer your questions and give you guys some update as we receive those updates. Thank you very much, and you can always email us if you have any questions meanwhile, you don't have to wait. So we are here, and as a team, you will come over this obstacle as well.
So which is it?
Muchas gracias a todos por asistir, nos dio mucho gusto verlos. Ah, por favor, si tienen preguntas, mándenos un correo electrónico, no se tienen que esperar hasta las reuniones, pero están bienvenidos a, a ir a nuestra reunión cada viernes a las 9:00 de la mañana. Muchísimas gracias y que todos estén saludables y a salvo.
Stay healthy, everybody, thank you so much.
And Priscilla, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bye, everyone.